All right, we are live. I am back. Ms. Angela Brooks is back for more. Said, "I'm coming back." Yes, we did. We did do it. If you guys missed it, did do a session the other day and I did, I got a tremendous amount of feedback on it. You did too, right?
I did.
That's good.
Just so good. It just changes your way of thinking about things. And sometimes we all need to be tweaked.
Well, you know, it's funny. I always tell people focus on what you're good at. And I'm not good at a lot of things. I'm the first person to say, "I'm not really good at organizing this or doing this or executing certain things." But this is my talent. It's just looking at somebody and talking to their thing and then packaging it or framing it. So it's super fun for me. I get a lot of joy out of doing, like, working on your story the other day. I just looked, we got off and I was like, "Damn." Other people, I can't bring them down the road as fast because they don't have as much clarity, like, and you and I have gotten to know each other some, so I know you over the years. So we're going to work on some letters today. I'm kind of, nobody's watching live at the moment. Somebody will pop on soon. But I'm going to be focusing with Angela. If any of you guys need to reach me or have a question or want to book one of these sessions, which are ridiculously reasonable. Truthfully, Angela, I usually won't do two at this price, but because you're you and because it was so helpful to people, I thought it was a thing to do. So you can't do 100 sessions with me at this price. I don't mean you. We could do whatever you want. I'll come, I'll come down to your, visit your house and I'll.
We would have a good time on the front porch.
Good friends and stuff like that. But, you know, just so everybody knows, because everybody will go, "Oh, I'll just keep booking Diane every week." No, no, no. Everybody wants to upgrade into something more extensive, definitely. But the, but the initial sessions and the live sessions that we do in public, super reasonable. So with that being said, let us get down to work. I'm actually going to share my screen in a second. I'm going to open up a notepad so I can just start typing. And what we're going to do is work on some letters for Angela's incredible program that she's opening up. Okay. Wonderbar. So top girlfriend, who are these letters going to? Are they going to an existing audience? Are they going to new people that were advertised to that they're opting in, which would create different messages? What are we doing?
These are going to people that have opted in and they are, they've already gotten two, one or two of the bumps that's in the session, in this, the Academy. So this is now encouraging them to purchase the main Academy to go in and get the big bulk of package.
Okay. Do you already have a page up that, that shows me what they opted into?
Uh, yes, it's kind of, let me see, it's free, let me see what the, I forget what the URL, we're going to change it, so, but this will give you an idea. We've got some work to do on it. It is freedomfoundationweb.com. We're going to change the colors, so don't be shocked at the color.
I'm not judging.
It's bright.
Don't worry, there's no judging. There's no judging. Okay. Let me show you the webinar, Mark. Is it an automated webinar?
This is, yes.
Marketing Freedom Academy, my simple system, well, any kind of online business is six figures and beyond.
And I don't like that phrase because I think it's yucky.
More reviews. Okay, so they would be getting these letters after they've watched the webinar?
Right.
Okay, cool. Cool. Papa. Um, yeah, based upon what we did the other day, I would consider changing some of this copy. Because this, uh, let me come back so you can see me. Let me just, let me just stop my share for a second and come back. Whoops. Wrong buttons. Um, one of my pet peeves out there is there's just certain messages that have been done over and over and over and over and over.
Yeah.
And, and they're fine messages. And the reason why people do them over and over and over is because they work. But they don't differentiate you. They don't position you in the marketplace as, well, the way you want to be positioned. What they do is do another B2. Let me show you how to generate leads. Let me show you how to do this. Let me show you, you know, it's, it's the same thing. The, the adding a little drama to that copy will help, you know, like, uh, overworked, burnt out, uh, mental health nurse. The secret way to, uh, figures out how to build a six-figure business on her, on her, uh, lunch break. I'm, I'm just rattling, you know, on her lunch break using her smartphone.
Yeah.
Okay, that's like, wait a minute, how did she do that? As opposed to, "Let me show you how to build a six-figure business, blah, blah."
Yeah, that, it just sounds so salesy and it's kind of like, it just doesn't attract me. And if it doesn't attract me, it's not going to attract somebody else.
Well, I think, you know what, I think we get to a point. The phrase my mentor taught me is, "I'm looking for people that are looking for me." But if they get to me, really what we're doing is when we're, when we're marketing this way, and again, I'm not criticizing because there's nothing wrong with it. It will work. But when we're marketing, here's how you make a six-figure business, what we get is people that are looking for money versus people that are looking for me. And if they're looking for money, if your program, product, your service doesn't provide the money quickly, they have to go somewhere else to look for money. See, if they fall in love with you, they're going to hang out with you until they break through. So it's one of the secrets to my longevity has always been that I've, I mean, if you look at my website, it's super obnoxious. It doesn't offer anything for free and it just basically says, "Look, if you want a bootcamp, if you want a video series or whatever, that I don't got. I got 20 years of experience. I can help you put in your name and email." It's very fresh. Because I'm literally wanting to sort people and I'm happy with less leads. Because the leads that I have and the list that I have is glued to me.
Right.
So in the beginning, when you're starting out, yeah, more leads is better and so on and so forth. But the, the longer you go and the more successful you get, and you're very successful now, you just sort the people before they get in your environment versus after.
Right.
So that's all I've just, I've done. So it's.
That makes sense now, because in the beginning, it was just like, everybody just like, more, more, more. And it's like, yeah, but they're not my people.
And that's it. So I'd rather only talk to my people. I want to sort them. I want to run off everybody that doesn't belong with me.
Yes, I don't get offended when people unsubscribe at all.
No, I want them to, I want them to go, I want them to eliminate themselves. I want them to unfriend me. Not that I want to be rude and get rid of people. Network marketing is a sorting game. And I'm looking and sorting for the right people. The same thing with if you're now offering courses. Some people learn brilliantly from me and other people are just like, whoa, like, they don't get me, they don't hear me. So I'm looking like you, you're back a second time, because obviously what we did was a good match for you.
Yeah.
Somebody else does a session with me, they get off at the end and they don't feel like they accomplished anything. I wasn't the right match for them. And that's, that's why we do things. I like to do things reasonably upfront, because I don't want to take thousands of dollars off of someone to have them become a client to find out that they're not a match, because I don't want to, I want to serve them. So, um, tell me about the webinar really quick. Like, what are they hearing and seeing?
Um, the webinar is basic building. How to put content out there to attract people to you, like how to build a list. I mean, the basics of building a list. Where you can put content on, on social media and how to put that out there so that you're attracting people. And then there's a little, a short blurb about blogging. And actually, I'm switching that out to how to blog on LinkedIn instead of building a full webpage, because it's easier. Um, but just the very basics of getting your content out there so that you can be searched and found. And, you know, setting up your profile and, and the very basics of getting started.
Is there a sales offer at the end of the webinar?
Yes.
How much is the price point?
$2.47.
Okay, and, uh, how long is the webinar?
So how long is it? Uh, it's 40, like 48 minutes.
Okay, great. Um, this letter would only be going to people who did not elect to buy immediately?
Right. They've bought a $37 bump, they've bought a $67 bump. And then they're going to get these three emails to drive them over to the main product.
Okay. So when did they buy the 37 and the 67?
Um, those are in the beginning, like, we're going to put some of these on Facebook ads. I got a girl that she really wants to put those on ads, so we're going to go there. Those are people that are cold marketed that are just getting to know me. So it's like $37 and here's, I think there's six different, they're getting PDFs, they're getting two webinars or two trainings. And there was another download. So they're getting stuff so they can kind of get to know me and how I teach. And then the $67 one is another big package of stuff. Uh, I think there's three, three trainings in there, two more downloads.
Okay, let me interrupt you and ask you a question. So what I, the page I just saw was inviting them to a webinar. Where are they buying something?
Where, say that again, you bleeped out.
Page I just saw invited them to a webinar.
Yes.
Webinar, are they being introduced to the $2.47 or they were introduced to the little things?
The little things come first and when they get to the 67, we start talking about that.
But they come before the webinar or after?
After. Um, there, this is after the $67 bump.
Okay, I go to the webinar. On the webinar, what do I see? 37?
No, the 37 is, oh, God.
You know what I'm saying? I'm trying to understand the order. If I don't understand the order and the sequence, I can't write the letter properly.
Right, right, right.
They buy something before they get invited to the webinar?
See, there's, there's the opt, there's the 37. I think, if I'm not mistaken, it comes at the 67 starts promoting. Oh, my gosh. That's interesting. Let me see if it's written in here. Hold on.
Sure.
Because I think they start talking about this. That it would make sense if they came into the webinar first. Come into the webinar, then you get to 37, you're 67. That's what it is. They come into the webinar. There you go. You come into the weapon, opt in here to the webinar and then it would go to the 37, 67, and the big one.
Webinar's in progress. Do not close the window. Streaming.
Yeah, I don't think the video's in there right now. I mean, it could be.
Okay. But I'm, so I'm advertised to this link and now I'm seeing a webinar?
Yes. And then after the webinar, they'll be offered the 37. The 67, there we go.
Okay, so they're offered a $37 offer and then an upsell to a 67?
Yes.
Been introduced to the whole kit and caboodle yet?
Not yet.
Okay. And is this letter only going to people who purchased? Or is this letter going to everybody who attended the webinar?
Everybody who attended the webinar.
Okay. Uh, then I'll do a little, insert a little drama. Okay. During the webinar, do you cover the fact that you were a nurse in your story?
I do, yep.
By the way, a secret. When you write to people casually as opposed to try and explain who you are, again, like, a lot of people are like, "Hi, you attended my webinar the other night." Blah, 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 right? And trying to explain who they are, because they think that the people don't know who they are, they instantly smell like a salesperson. You see, if I called and I went, "Hey Angela, it's Diane. What's going on?" If I said to you, "Hi Angela, it's Diane and I met you at Ray Higgin's event a couple of years ago and then we were at the Top Earner Club. I, I, I hope you remember me." Right? Yep. What do you want?
Exactly.
But if I leave you a message and go, "Hey Angela, it's Diane. I just had a quick question for you. Uh, let me know if you have some time to catch up."
Absolutely.
And even if you weren't sure which Diane it was, maybe you had three of them in your life, you'd look at the area code, you'd go, "Oh, it's Diane Hock," right?
Right.
And it's because there's a familiarity. So when we write to people, a lot of people try to write professionally and explain all this stuff. My style of writing is just going, "Of course you know who I am." Now, right or wrong, it creates a familiarity and people, it, it drops some of their defense mechanisms.
Gotcha.
You follow?
Makes sense, because I read your entire email all the way to the bottom every time.
And it's because I talk to everybody very, very familiar.
Yes.
It's, it's a trick that I learned years ago. Um, there's a couple other people that write copy like that. Very few do. So it's disarming, because if I walk in and I go, "Hey, what's going on? How have you been? I haven't seen you so long and you're not sure who I am." Your brain has to go to work trying to figure out who I am, because I clearly remember you. Right? And I mean, "Oh, my God," I give you a hug and you're like, "Oh, my God, I know, I know, I know." It's not my job to do the work. It's your job to do the work, right? So when I enter with a knowing, that of course you know who I am, you just spent 46 minutes with me. Hello?
Got it.
If it seems casual, it's, it's very on purpose.
Very, very good.
You said you worked nights, right?
I did.
What time did you go in again?
Six at night till seven in the morning for 21 years. That is the truth right there.
Yeah. What I'm doing is everybody else dreads when it's time to go to work, like, everybody, like, on Sunday, you see people, like, Sunday afternoon comes and everybody starts to get miserable.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm injecting some pain before we talk about what's available. I shouldn't, I would. I want you to, I want you to make sure, do, do you want something that goes out right away? After they watch the webinar, or is it okay to schedule it like the next day or something?
I was going to say, next day is, to me, is better.
Good. Um, I don't mind saying the other day, because, yeah, even though it was yesterday, I don't want to say yesterday. There has to be. Oh, God, that's so good. I'm sorry. Okay. And we said that these people have definitely bought something or may not have.
They may not have at this point.
Okay. I have, help people like you. Okay, so we're reflecting your values, your home, you know, your country kind of values, you know, where I come from, it's just the right thing to do. That's why I started writing products for folks. It took me years to learn all this stuff. And after what I've been through, I can teach as you and practically no time flat.
And that is where I struggle in my writing is giving myself credit, or I feel like it's bragging on myself. But when I do, it flows and it gets good results. I don't know why I don't do it more often.
Isn't it funny how we don't do the thing, the very thing that works now?
Absolutely.
Remember, ego works both ways. Ego when we think we're all that and ego when we think it's not enough. Um, they're both ego, you know? So like, when we're second guessing ourselves or doubting ourselves, I'm trying to position you as the person that you are, which is a very nice, very helpful woman that would, you know, that would do anything to help someone. Um, and that's who you are. You've always been that. So, um, it took, it took me years to learn all this stuff and after what I've been through, I can teach you and practically no time flat. Uh, so. Are you going to use, um, these customers' potentials for your MLM as well?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to drop this. Uh, in fact, I got so excited to, and I decided. Did we decide we're calling it an academy or what is it going to be?
Academy, uh, the network, uh, the Marketing Freedom Academy. I have to keep saying that so I can, it's got to flow.
That's a great point. I got so excited about teaching this to some of my team members and so that makes them go, "What team is that?" I decided to create an academy to help anyone from any business that wants to learn how to market online in the nicks and crannies of their days using nothing day, like, it's a cranny of their day. Using nothing more than a smartphone on your lunch breaks. Um, I don't want to say "in fact" again.
I love the way you format your writing.
Uh, you gotta, you gotta, uh, it's got to be readable. It's like visual cotton candy.
Love that.
I'm writing in a very big font on a notepad right now, so you may have to re-change it a little bit. You know, put it where you're putting it. Um, but always leave plenty of room, always breaks, um, so that somebody can scan it, because that's what people do, is they scan it, Angela, to determine whether or not it's worth reading.
Right, I, I do. And I mean, we're, most of us are reading on our phones, so it's got to be readable.
And you got to keep in mind too, that a lot of people are on mobile, which is why we don't want, we don't type wide. I'm a little wide here, but you know well enough to not type wide.
Right.
If you got to bring it down more, bring it down. I'm just trying to do this real quick, so we can get three letters in. But I did it and I'm here to tell the story. And me, I had to do it on an old BlackBerry.
I found a picture of one of those.
I'm going to just, is the academy? What other platforms do you cover?
Um, what do I cover? Let's see, this building, blogging, traction, marketing. And where to find our leads.
Okay, I'm going to change this. I'll have to read this aloud to make sure that I didn't repeat things or whatever. After work, how many years? 21 years? I'm going to go on the edge. You may not like this. Where are you, Kentucky?
Yes.
Okay, by my, we can do this, do.
Is there a certain length to pages like this to write?
A certain length? What do you mean?
Yeah, for an email, is there a certain word length that these need to be? Some people do really, yeah, some people do long copy.
I thought you said link, uh, not length. Um, I was like, link, what? You know, a lot of people have rules. What time are you supposed to mail? What day are you supposed to mail? How long should you be, blah, blah, blah. I just write a letter, you know, right or wrong or indifferent, I just, I just go into their heart. So sometimes it's, I could write a letter that says, "Peekaboo, peekaboo, it's Angela. Did you get the academy yet? We're meeting soon. You need, I need to see you there." You know, I, and it's, it's one paragraph. Another letter might be longer. One might have bullet points and junk.
Just whatever hits you. Okay.
Well, here's what it is. When a friend communicates with you, right? Like, let's say you're, it's your best friend. Sometimes they call you up and they go, "Hey Angela, what are you bringing to the potluck on Saturday?" And you go, "I'm bringing, you know, macaroni and cheese. Okay, cool. I'm going to make blank. Okay, all right, I'll see you later. The kids are coming. Got to go."
Done.
Another day, they'll call up and you'll talk for two hours. What's the difference? It's, it's the way we communicate as humans. And so my style of communication is based upon humanity. This is the first letter, so it's going to be a little longer. Another day, it could be two, two, three sentences. And what people do is they interpret it as, "This is my friend talking to me."
I like that.
Yeah.
I really, the sales, I want to be as far away from the salesy stuff as I can get, because I know, I just, it just doesn't feel good.
And that's why I'm trying to, I, I want these letters to sound like you. Like you have this wonderful accent, you're from the south. And I want, I want people that, that's why I used the word folks. And, you know, I threw in Kentucky in case you're wondering where you're from. I want people to feel your warmth sincerity and that you're not slick, which is the exact opposite of what a lot of people want to do. A lot of people want to make it slick.
Yeah.
Make it as unslick as possible.
Yes.
They're gonna join your team too. So... And especially, they just heard you on a webinar, so they've heard your voice.
Yep.
They've heard your voice. So now I want to take it where they're reading a letter and they can hear your little laugh. They can hear, you know, they can see you. That's what people say when they read my letters. They're like, I can hear you in my head.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Even though I'm writing and it's me writing, I'm trying to make this sound more like you than me. Because I'm from Brooklyn, New York, you know? You know, like this kind of little aggressive thing going on. Okay. Now, is there a sales letter or do you actually have to sell the course in here? Does that have to be a look at the sales letter or is the letter designed to actually do the selling?
These are actually gonna be doing more of the selling. I do have some, but I want to, I'm gonna be doing some changing on them because the person who helped me write those were so salesy that it was just not even like me.
Yeah, it's really common. Truthfully, this is what I do. Let me stop sharing for a minute so you can see me. If we try to do, if we try to make the, how are you gonna take payment?
Stripe.
Okay, so where are they making that payment?
You mean in the process of these?
Yeah, because if I, if I write this letter and I say, go by now, where are they going?
I have a sales page up for that.
Okay, and so it would be, it doesn't prevent the product or it does?
It has the sales pages for them to make purchase and then it takes them into the product.
Okay, so it's just a cart basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that changes things. If we try to use the letter to do the selling, the letters are gonna get really long. I think that you're better off having a page in front of a cart. Even if it's not a full tilt sales page, I think maybe even just having a video where they, there's a headline, there's a video, and it's you going, hey, it's Angela. I am so glad that you're excited about the academy because I can't tell you how excited I am. Here's what you're gonna get. And we could do it, I have software where it could be, you know, like a voiceover or do it live. But I don't think trying to do the bullet points of all the things you're gonna get in the letters, the letter's gonna get to be 10 pages long.
Right.
And, and if you go from a letter like this and you go, come on over, come on over here and I'll tell you exactly what I have going on. Let them come watch a video of you explaining what you've put together. Until you do a full tilt sales page, I think would be effective. I think if I were to, when you're selling a course like this, you have to do, you're gonna get this, you're gonna get this, you're gonna get this, you're gonna get this.
Lots of stacks, yeah.
And it's, and then you have to repeat it in the next letter. See, if I write these warm letters and then I bring them over where they find out about the product, we're just trying to coax them over from the letter. If I write a letter that has the whole sales context in it, in the next letter, if it repeats it again, it'll be obnoxious. Do you follow what I'm saying? It'll be, it'll be too much. Versus if I write a sequence of three letters where I'm just trying to get them over to come hear from you about what you put together. Doesn't have to be fancy. It could be a headline, a video and a button that takes them to the cart.
Okay.
Presented, and I don't think that the presenting in the letters is gonna be your best move.
I've got a page that has a video, but it probably needs to be redone so it's softer. Because I think I'm better at video than I was when I first done these. I need to look at that page.
I mean, I could write, if you, if, if this was your existing list that you wanted to pull customers from your existing list of people that are familiar with you, a three letter sequence and treat it like a launch. You know, like I do that all the time. I write, like recently, I participated in the Tony Robbins product thing. And I wrote to my list, you know? But there was a sales page to send them to. So I could do a three letter sequence. But if you have people that saw an ad opted in, right? I can't get away with doing the sales process in the letters.
Okay.
Not gonna convert well. And then again, I could do it once, but then you can't have a second letter with the whole, you know, here's what you're getting and here's the bullet points.
Right.
So if you want to get this moving quickly, I would do a video for now. And again, you can do a video that doesn't have to be a full tilt, just Angela. We could write a script to the video, throw it in the software. It pops out slides and we throw your picture in and stuff like that. And it's just your voice.
What's the name of that software?
It's Content Samurai. You could use mine if you want. Hey, you can all use my software. Angela can't. Everybody will be like, can I have your login to use your software? You know, I mean, you could buy it if you want.
Oh, cool.
Take my link. But what it is, is you take something that's written. It's written there and then it turns it into a presentation. And then it populates the words and the pictures and everything. And then you just switch out pictures if you want. So you want to put in some pictures of you or whatever. And, and then you, and then you do a voiceover, but it's like slide by slide. So instead of having to read the whole script, it's like, hey, it's Angela. Boop, and you stop. And then you go, I'm so glad you're here and excited about the academy. Boop, and then you do the next one.
Oh my God, that's so cool.
Show you, I'll give you a link of a couple of videos I've done like that. Because what, when I'm not being lazy, I take some of my letters and written pieces and then I turn them into videos doing this. I just paste the stuff in, it populates it. I was at, I was with Angel and they were working on something and she was spending like tens of thousands of dollars on all these videos. And we were at Ryan's house and I said, I'll be right back. And I wrote, I wrote a little script. I said, I'll be right back. And I went into one of the kids' rooms and I did the voiceover and I came out, I said, here. It took me like five minutes. I walked back out, I go, here, something like this. And everybody was like, how do you do that? And I was like, that would be $10,000, please.
Absolutely. The right tool makes all the difference. Oh my God.
It's, it's a pretty cool. But I'm just saying that you can write letters and get people to look at a sales page more than once. That's normal, right? We go and we look and we, we try to convince ourselves, oh, should I get it? Shouldn't I get it? Isn't that?
Right.
You put all the sales in the letters. Nobody's gonna read your next letter.
Exactly.
See, it's your permission. They have to voluntarily, they have to be willing to take the pitch. If you pitch them without their...
Permission.
Yeah, permission, they leave.
So these letters would be better to go out to my list to get them to the webinar more so than to a cold market.
Well, the letter that I just wrote is fine with the cold market that saw the webinar. But what I want is to, to then get them to go voluntarily see the presentation of the product. Shove the product down their throat before they've agreed to see about the product. We only get one shot.
Right.
If we invite, it's, it's the same premise as attraction marketing. If I pitch you, if I prospect you and you say no, it's very hard to go back and prospect you a lot more. We can follow up, but you can only do it so many times a year, follow up with a person.
Right.
I have you in an attraction marketing system where you voluntarily agreed to hear information, then sometimes you want to buy, sometimes you don't. Sometimes you want to see, like in my list, I'm selling things all the time. We'll click to see it. Sometimes they don't. But they don't feel like I'm pitching them all day because if they did, they wouldn't read the letters.
Right.
You know, like when I offered these sessions, I was just like, hey, I'm gonna do some of these sessions. Here's what it is. And if you want to do it, reach out to me. Then I figured out that it was a pain in the neck having people reach out. So then I put the link and I said, here, go pay. Then there were too many and then I had to shut it down. So, so all I did was I say, hey, do you want a one-on-one session? Thousands of people read the letter. So many said, I'd like one. You were one of the first people to jump through the screen because you knew the value of it. Other people are like, I don't get it. By the way, we're not gonna get all these letters done today, Angela. But I think what I'm teaching was helpful.
Yes.
Because you can't put a pitch, the only time you can pitch in a letter hardcore is if the people are already yours, if you already possess them, right? If you write a hardcore pitch, I would even put in my subject line, hardcore pitch, be aware, or hard, but warning, hardcore pitch enclosed. But did you see my ridiculous post the other day on Facebook about come join my pyramid deal? Look at my wall. It's ridiculous. It was like, it was half, it's just like so straightforward. And everybody's like, only you could get away with that. I said, no, I'm the only one that tells the truth.
Right.
Yeah, I, I signed up so many people and I have this going on. And now I've gotten to the first leadership rank and I've done this, this and this. So now what I'd like to do is get a couple more people and start a couple more legs. So I said, hey, who wants to join my pyramid deal? Who's looking? And tongue in cheek, and of course, everybody was like, you can't say that. And I'm like, actually, I can.
I can say what I want to.
Well, so with this group of people, I'm having fun. Like I use the term psych ward. Well, and then I've admitted that their job is a psych ward. Isn't everybody's job a psych ward?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
I'm having fun with your background. Maybe saying some things that somebody else might go, ooh. But anybody who's heard you knows that you're warm and not like that. I mean, I know that you're an excellent nurse. I just know it. I mean, I don't know, you haven't given me any meds or anything yet, but can I?
I didn't have to give a little bit. I really did.
That's good, that's good. But see what I'm saying, anybody that's heard your voice and seen you knows that there's no intent. Anybody that hears your story about why you want to provide this for people knows that it's not a pitch. It's like, please let me help you. It took me years to figure this out. Please let me help you. If somebody doesn't know you and somebody reads just three letters in a row going buy my stuff, it won't convert. But if somebody reads this warm letter and then voluntarily clicks the link to go hear the pitch, they, they made the decision to go. And that becomes powerful. If we hit them without permission. And usually if I am writing a letter that has a pitch in it, I, I start with, hey, there's something big going on. I just want to let you guys know, you know, I am making an offer here. I'm just very straightforward. This, you wouldn't do that because these people don't know you yet. Well, we have to get their permission to take them over there. Now, if you write something for your personal list and, and, and let them be like landmark members or founding members or whatever, or if you want to do something with your personal list to offer them an extra bonus for joining before it goes out to the public, we can do that too. But this group are cold. And here's why you might want to start with that. P.S. and by the way, and I know I'm taking you in a different direction at a quarter of, and I apologize, but I still think you understand the value. If we can go get so many members off of your existing audience, now we can package that story that, you know, I, I made this available to only close associates and I had such a warm response. I'm now taking it out to the public. You also, when you're selling to the existing people, you're able to say, I wanted to give you dibs before I go public. Or because you've been a loyal subscriber, I wanted to give you something extra. And by the way, anybody that watches the video, this is not games because there are a lot of marketing games and a lot of phrases and there are a lot of tricks you can play on people. This is sincere. I know you love your people. You want to give them first mover advantage. Of course you want to give them something extra for being a loyal subscriber. Of course you let them know before it goes out. So, you know, yeah, there's, there's, certainly there's marketing advantages to doing it. Sometimes people go, oh, you're tricking people. I'm not trying to trick anybody, but I'd like my known quantity people to be inside my membership site first because likely to tell me if there's a problem or a mistake and still love me. Then cold, cold market.
They're, they go, oh.
Yeah, they don't care. You know, it's good, it's not good. Cold market will refund, cold market will do this and that. The people that trust are much more likely to go, hey Angela, did you see unit three is messed up? P.S. and by the way, that's why I work completely warm market.
Yeah.
I'm always screwing up. I'm just constantly screwing up. And people who dig me and understand what I'm good at, they'll always help me. I mean, people like literally show up, well, let me just do that for you Diane. I can't stand to watch you anymore. People will pick over my webinar. Give me the screen share. I'll do it for you because they can't stand to watch me typing. So... I'm gonna finish this letter and I want you to think because I probably could pop one more really quick. We can run a little over. Do you want me to write something for your list and then?
The list is a better place to start. I really like that.
I do, but I didn't know your scenario, so I didn't guide you that way first.
I like that because, I mean, I've, I've got a good sized list and that would just be, I would like to offer them first.
Your list, you can send them straight to cart.
Right.
They don't need a fancy sales page with product pictures and all this other stuff. They don't need anything fancy. All they need is to hear from Angela's heart about what she's put together and why she's offering it to them first. And they could be your members. Want to do that?
Absolutely, because I, yes. Because I mean, people respond to me from my list. They, they hit reply like they do yours and send me messages. And I think that would be more valuable.
Why not, why not go to them first? Now, the only thing you need to be aware of is if you have some people that are from your company that are not in your downline, selling information products to them could become an issue with your company. So just be hyper aware and vigilant. You may, again, depending on your company, and I don't know their rules and regulations, policies and procedures, you may need to tell people specifically, if you're in this company, I can't sell this to you. Just be careful because this comes up when people start selling info products.
Really? Alright.
Really, yes. Check in with Ray on it too. I mean, they, yeah. Because companies get concerned that you're trying to make a buck off of the organization. That's not your intention here. I know it's not. I'm trying to teach people stuff.
Yeah.
Companies get concerned and also if I'm somebody's upline, right? And my sideline is selling them a bunch of stuff and I don't know what's in it, I could get concerned too as a company. So if you know that your list is chock full of people from your program, be smart.
Okay.
Be smart. Let me do this. I'm gonna save this one.
Yeah, because that one, I can get all kinds of ideas off of that one. I made my son get off the internet. And he's mowing the yard.
There you go. I even made you your own folder now. You're so important.
Awesome.
What's the average, is most of your list women?
I have a few men, but there is majority women.
Okay, would you say the majority of them are over 40 or younger or what would you say?
Definitely sort of crowd. I would say 30, 40s. It's a lot, just about all of them have children.
Okay.
Lots and lots of baseball moms. Sports mom. I get pictures of some people at ball games.
Do you ever see on Facebook, people do the never did I ever game? And you talk about never did I ever go to, you know, never did I ever smoke a cigarette? Never did I ever, it's just people listing things that they didn't do. So I'm using this little phrase because it's a popular catchphrase right now. But then again, I used to...
Let me see your writing screens.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not on. No wonder why you're not, you usually giggle when I write something kooky, so.
There it goes.
Never did I ever think this day would come. But then again, I used to think I would never get out of my... Uh, never did I ever think this day would come, but then again, I used to think I would never get out of my. You have the word shared twenty times. Before I share it with anyone, I had to come share it with you. You, on my list, week in and week out, reading my letters, sharing your life with me. Uh, that's the word share three times in one sentence. That's. This is why we read letters aloud. Show it to anyone. I had to come.
Do you use Grammarly at all?
No.
That helps me with those kind of words.
I use a thesaurus when I need to come up with another word.
Yeah.
And the reason why I don't use Grammarly is because I don't want to write grammatically correct on purpose. Um, I want to write very colloquially, very casually, like the way you talk to a friend. We don't speak grammatically correct to our friends.
Thank goodness.
Exactly. So, so a program that's designed to fix my grammar will do just so, but that's not what I need. Uh, before I showed to anyone, I had to come give a sneak peek to you. What platform did you build all these courses on?
ClickFunnels.
Let me just message someone, tell them to be a couple of minutes late. One second Angela.
You're good.
Okay. Okay. Have the ability on ClickFunnels to give a $37 thing away?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, what could we do to incentivize these folks?
They're, um, they're, uh, can't even think what's in it. There's like four freebies that go out before the 37 shows up and I can't remember what's in that. But there is a free offer first. I can't remember what's in it. I've had all this stuff in a, in a vault that I've just kind of pulled out and it's like, I gotta do something with all this good stuff.
No, it's, it's a lot of information to remember. All the sequences and everything else.
And I finally used MLSP's, um, uh, product builder. That was super easy.
Yeah, the business center is very easy.
Super simple.
Very easy. Time for me to create all my products. I'm just lazy. I'd rather work on everybody else's. I've always been that way. Let me write your letters for you. I don't really want to write my own. Um, okay, I'm a little type of girl that I'm good at. So today I'm inviting you to become, uh, When you ask people to help you find your errors, they love it.
It's like, yes.
Also, I hope you also. Some people will just buy it because they think you're.
Just to critique it.
And yeah, I'm not stupid. I know that by doing something special for my most loyal people, you will also help me out by telling me if you see anything funky inside the membership site before we take it public.
And this, this program has already generated right at 5,000 in sales, because we run it differently before and I've went on to redone some things. So I think tweaking it will help. There's just so much to building products on my word.
Uh, yeah, which is why I haven't done them myself. Not because I don't want them and this is not, it's just.
It's so much.
It's a lot and, uh.
I've worked on this thing like forever, but I thought if I get this up, I won't be doing another one for a while.
Okay, so give me, what am I telling them they get?
Inside the academy, they're going to learn how to generate their own leads that are for their ideal client. How to have fun on social media with attraction marketing.
There's no fun allowed. We might tweak that. Go ahead. What else are they going to learn?
Um, why you need to build a list for your business.
I want to use money making again. Go ahead. I'll tweak them, but just keep going.
Um, and content marketing. I have my 14 day challenge video to do today.
This needs to be written sexy. Cause I don't want to say content, because half the time people don't even know what it is.
Exactly.
Let's see. Have fun on social media, money during fun. And my list building. The simple online tool is an autoresponder.
Right. Everybody wants to automate, but they just don't know what it takes to do that.
No, but it's so funny. Everybody wants to automate and then I show them the most effective automation tool under the sun. They don't use it.
Yep. Everybody wants it automated.
So funny.
It's like, yeah, I have some automation, but it's not really auto.
But they're just, they're just funny. I mean, I'm like, look, I get to write a letter and it goes out to thousands of people and then they give me money. Pretty cool. Well, can't I just have the letters pre-done for me and can I have, nobody wants to put themselves into their marketing.
Exactly. They want the end results of what it takes years to build on my word.
That's all right. They're going to buy your course with that fantasy and it's all good.
I got started online. I had to look up, how do you copy and paste? I didn't even know how to do that.
We all did. So we need to come up with something special that the people that are already on your existing list that are getting that nobody else gets. Doesn't have to be anything that costs anything, but it could be a private webinar with founding members. It could be.
I was going to say it could be a 30, 30 minute webinar, hour webinar, whatever for, um, on a certain date. I can do that. A Q and A session, I guess.
I don't know what you're going to give them for this Angela, but it sounds sexy. You're going to give them the special secret that you held back because you're just developing it and you want to tweak these secrets out together. We just, you get a special Q and A webinar. It's like, who cares?
It's a surprise for me too.
It is. It's so, it's so new and so cutting edge. But this is kind of generic. Come up with something that you've been working on, like, I don't know if you put the LinkedIn blogging in the course or some other stuff that you've been doing. Um, a lot of people don't realize too, you can blog on Facebook with the notes feature.
Yep.
That a lot of people don't do.
Yep.
Searchable. So there's a lot of different things. Come up with something that's not in the course, that's something.
Those two things right there would be, because people don't realize where you can put content that can be Googled.
Yep, exactly. So showing them those two little things that nobody's really aware of, um, could be super cool. And, and say things like, look, I didn't want to put this in the course because algorithms change and things change, but it's something I've been using really effectively now. It may or may not work six months from now, which is why I didn't want to put them in my long-term course, something like that.
Yep. My notes are just crazy.
Sorry, I'm just looking to see if this person is messaging me back. No, it's not them.
Oh, I just, oh, this would be so good.
What'd you say?
It'd be so good.
I just use, it sounds cool, but.
Now, these, these emails have my list checked off, and hopefully it'll be out there before then.
Gorgeous. People, they want to feel special. How many units are there?
Seven.
Do you know how much time it takes to go through the seven units?
There are about 40, 45 minutes each.
So run that through your calculator and tell me how much, how many hours that is.
Oh, Lord, you're like me. Let me see.
Times 35 divided by 60?
So we're looking at four and a half hours.
All right.
Four and a half hours. That's not right. Can't be right, is it?
Oh, that's really.
Yeah. There you go. Out of 60 minutes.
Seven units.
Most people don't finish four and a half hours of content. Content Samurai, that is just blown my mind.
This is a little salesy down here, but it's okay because I'm going to reel it back in. Angela, you got to come up with one more thing to give them. It is. I'm just telling you that what, what I'm doing here is I'm getting them to go pay, then hit reply with the subject line, "I'm in," and I'm telling them that they're going to get another prize.
So I can have my daily method of operation that I finished last night.
Darling, I'm sorry, but I have to run.
Absolutely. It's already. Beautiful. Thank you so much.
I'll send them to you after.
Go finish your other person.
Okay, let me turn this off so I can see your face. So I think we made some progress.
Oh, yeah.
I know we had to flip things around, and we didn't get pumped out as much as you might have liked, but I also think you got a little bit more clarity on the different groups, how to work with the different groups.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That gives me lots of totally different focus. I like the way that writes out.
Okay, good. I'll send them to you after one time, okay?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
You love it. Bye.